Council Bluff Savings Bank. Our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's Bank to help Council Bluff be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank. Hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Called meeting order. Let's record show all members of council are present except Mr. Walsh. We have a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of item 5L.
Second.
Third, discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This evening, we do have a number of public hearings, a group of resolutions, applications for permits. If you'd like to speak to the council, please step to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of resolution 13-296, Vacated East West Alley, Block 7, Turley's Edition, along with the north 10 feet of Avenue L, line between the west right-of-way line of North 8th Street and the east right-of-way line of North 10th Street. Is proof publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. Was the council's pleasure.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of resolution 13-297, approving the plan specification and form of contract for the Broadway Fountain renovation project. Is proof publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. Was the council's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Just so people realize, the original Broadway Fountain that I believe was installed in around 1890 and was up at the Dodge House during the mid to late 20th century for the most part, and it's now been reinstalled there at the entrance there right off of West Broadway, is in need of significant repair, and so it's actually going to be disassembled and is explained to us by the head of Parks, Rec., and Public Property. And what may be its first complete renovation, it's going to actually be sandblasted down to its original cast iron. There are a lot of weaknesses in it. A lot of the detail work had fallen off into the fountain, and so this will preserve it for future generations. So it will be missing for a while, as long as necessary for it to be completely restored to look as good as it has looked since 1890, so that it'll be around in another 100 years.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of ordinance 6197, amending chapter 9.72, operation of vehicles by amending section 9.72.230, signal required. Is proof publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. Was the council's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance passes the law. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of ordinance 6198, amending chapter 15.03, definitions, by amending section 15.03.048A, automobile sales and rentals, and setting the public hearing for December 2nd, 2013, 7:00 PM. I believe that's December 16th.
No, that's today. That's just...
Error.
That's an error. Sorry. Oh, is proof publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? Was the council's pleasure?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Well, we took this up probably four years ago, and at the original recommendation of city staff was, I believe, the 20,000 square feet. The council, in depth, looked into this and decided that 25,000 was a more appropriate number, and so I would like to stick with that decision that we previously had made.
I'm generally in favor of not, of having the law be settled unless there's a reason for the change. I don't like it to change every year just based on the composition of who may be in these chairs that year and who may not be. And so folks know, this concerns what's the minimum amount of square footage you'd have to have to open a car lot on West Broadway, west of the Viaduct. And in '09, it was addressed. I don't see any reason put forward to change it, so I'm going to concur in denial. I think people should reasonably know what to expect, and there's been no reason to change it.
Any other discussion? Motion to floor and a second to deny. All in favor to deny, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I have a question. So do we have another reading?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of ordinance 6199, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.27.020B by rezoning property located at 1735 North Broadway, legally described as lots 1, 2, 3, and 35, and the west one-half of the vacated alley of Budding, except South Linden Avenue, the north 191 feet of Lot 6, and the west 60 feet of Lot 34, and the east one-half of the vacated alley of Budding, and school lot, all in Block 2, Lincoln Acres, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District with a PR, Planned Residential Overlay, asset forth and defined in chapters 15.10 and 15.28. Is proof publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
Yes, we received three notices by email in favor and one petition against the proposed rezoning.
So the petition should be received and filed?
Yes.
Okay, motion received and filed?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any other information then? That was it?
That was it.
Okay. Excuse me. Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against?
John Marshall, 125 Gunn Avenue. I know we have a couple of these issues kind of blended together a bit, so I'll just make my remarks at this time. The North Broadway Neighborhood Association is really supportive in finding a workable solution to the reuse of this former gun school property. We completely agree with both the city planning department and the planning commission that the proposed Selden complex is too large in density for our neighborhood. As a matter of fact, there's not even 46 homes in all of north, south, and Linden Avenue combined. The R1 homeowners who live within 200 feet of the gun school property signed that petition last week opposing the Selden proposal of 42 to 46 units. No one refused to sign, and I'm not the most intimidating guy in the world, okay? With the exception of four homes that did not answer the door, we had 100% participation. On a survey that we did in mid-October of individuals that are in our North Broadway group, it indicated that only 23% of those responders would support extending the footprint of the gun school property. Again, we want to find a workable solution. We too agree with the city council that the building needs immediate attention. Many cities are making wise decisions concerning the reuse of vacant school buildings, and we would like to see this happen, but not at the expense of an expansive construction on the playground area that would greatly increase the density of the property within our R1 neighborhood. I would very encourage you to stop by and visit with some of the property owners that live within 200 feet of the building, and if you do, try to envision the design plans for the project that adds to the current building, the two-story addition, kind of a wall of apartments, numerous garages. As you stand in their backyards, or if you look out there, you look out next door, you would ask yourself, if you own that house, is this the view I planned when my family bought this home? And is this what I expected them to see each morning? I'm saying let's not double the size of the building footprint, but let's work together to find an acceptable unit number that will move this project forward. In closing, I can't say it any better than one of my neighbors who wrote me an email, shared it with me, and she said, "As representatives of the citizens of our town, please listen to the voices of individuals of our neighborhood, and thank you for your time. I know your decision won't be easy. We're passionate as neighbors and as a neighborhood because we love that little section of our city and Council Bluff." Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking against?
I live at 18826 Evergreen Lane. The reason I'm here is because my son and daughter-in-law bought a home two years ago at 11 Gunn Avenue. They bought this home on the strength of that neighborhood. They're a young couple. They chose that neighborhood to begin their life together and to raise their future children. This is the second time that I've witnessed this coming before the council. The city planning department and the planning commission, of which I attended the last meeting, have voted to reject the density issue of this project. Density is the issue here. The neighborhood is concerned about what will happen if a lot of density is brought into the neighborhood, but let's think about this, not as a big problem, but as maybe a big opportunity for the city. I would point to what happened at the Omni Center, how long that big mall sat empty, how we walked past and saw buckets in the hallway with water dripping in, when then an innovative developer came up and turned it into something that the city can be proud of. We can do this again. It's an opportunity for the developer to show they can think beyond just another institutional dense structure. We can do better than that. It's an opportunity for the city to show that Council Bluff is a progressive community. We can do better than another dense building. It's an opportunity for the neighborhood to maintain its integrity and incorporate a model housing area on that space. We can do this. If the parties involved can come together, the city can have a development that we can all be proud of. It could be a cottage pocket community. It could be townhomes with apartments constructed in the buildings that are there and then a minimal construction put forth forward. A modern community, something for the 21st century, not an institutional building for the last century. Council Bluff can create a model development here if we don't rush it. It didn't rush with the old mall. It needn't rush here. The process is working. That's why we're all here again, and I've watched the government of the city working this through. The reasons that the city planning department and the planning commission have turned this down twice are valid ones. I would urge this council to agree with them and the Neighborhood Association that further development is needed to come up with a solution that we can all be proud of. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Deborah Peterson, 215 South Main Street, Council Bluff, representing the applicant Selden Development Company. Yeah, we've been here a couple times. We're back again and asking for your support on this project because, as you've seen over the last year and a half, nothing else has come forward. As the school saw when they were taking bids on the project, nothing else came forward. Are there lots of ideas? Absolutely. Is there enough money to go around? No. And that's really what any project, I don't care if it's the Omni Center, the refurbishing of City Hall, the refurbishing of an old house or a historic building, it all comes down to the financial dollars that are involved in this. This, as you know, involves gun school, which has been closed for about three years now. The building is not in that great a shape, but it is continuing to deteriorate at the present time, and it's a unique structure that we feel that you should try to preserve and help us preserve as part of our city's history. I've gone over the project with you before. I've offered information and project drawings to you. Basically, the existing structure will be renovated to include 18 residential units, a couple of community rooms, a kitchenette, a computer center, an exam room, and handicap-accessible restrooms, which will be for not only the residents but will be available for use by neighborhood and community organizations. The problem that seems to cause grief for the neighbors is the construction of an additional structure that would house an additional 28 units built to the south, and on the end it would be one story. The portion that connects the two buildings would be two stories where it adjoins. Also includes 23 garages and 23 parking stalls, which allows us a one-to-one parking ratio, which we think is more than we need, but that should adequately serve the project. The concerns about the exterior, as you can tell from the elevation drawings, are unfounded because the project is designed to blend in with the neighborhood. It's not going to block anyone's views. The structure of the old building will be repeated in the new structure to make that blend together. The layout will include hard-surface walking paths, a gazebo, garden areas. We have expanded the walking path since we were here last year, added some detention basins, and other landscaping effects in a resident garden. The concern was raised about detention basins. We will put those in as effectively and efficiently as we can, financially feasible as well, but that is required, as you know, by the city and state requirements to contain our runoff onto the property. If it's able to place them underground or do them in a different manner that would be more aesthetically pleasing at a cost that is financially feasible, we will do that. We were here a year ago, and what my client and I heard from the council was that you were concerned about holding us to our word and making sure that we develop this project the way we said we would. So basically, we thought, we were told to go back and do this the right way, put a planned residential overlay on it, and as you all know, and for the public's benefit, that means that you get to control everything that we do on that property. Everything that's submitted to you now has to be constructed as it's submitted. If we wish to make any material changes, we have to go back to Don Gross, the planning director. If he believes those changes are material in any way, then the whole project has to come back to the planning commission and back to you for approval. So that allows you to retain control of this. The density is an issue for the neighborhood, and some of you council members have raised that issue with me as well. I think when you look at the R3 plant, R3 low density, this size of a property can actually accommodate up to 60 units. We're not going that far so that we can have the amenities and the blending into the landscape and the neighborhood that we want to have. You approved the amendment to a comprehensive plan a couple months ago that talked about the adaptive reuse of existing structures and trying to get them arranged in context of the neighborhood. That's what we're doing here. Selden has done other projects in Nebraska with school buildings, and that's what we've done, is try to blend those into the neighborhood so that they fit in. This project will fit in. I gave you the calculations that show that actually the structures in this proposal are less dense than an R1 allowed structures if there were five homes on the property would be. And if you have questions on that, I'm not a density calculation person, but our architect is here to answer any questions that you have. We have proposed 46 units at this location. That's what makes this project financially feasible, allows us to meet the needs of our residents and enhance the community, as well as provide the amenities that we think we want to have for our residents. If we don't get approved at this point, we're not going to go forward with the project. There's some discussion that, you know, you should go along with the planning commission and their vote to allow only construction of 18 units on the property. Selden will not proceed with the project at 18 units. It's not financially a responsible action for their company to take. Many of these projects are going to depend on the money. Yes, there's other ideas, but until that's done, until there's somebody else buying or knocking at the door to buy the property, it's just not going to happen. There was also some question about doing lesser units and the costs and the price of the property. Basically, we're looking at just about $6.5 million in construction costs here. That's about $132,000 per unit. So even if we were able to negotiate a better price with the school district, you're only talking maybe one or two units. It's less, it's just over 3%. The purchase price of the property is just over 3% of the total project. And of course, then there's other considerations about disposal of public property, which you all know about. I think it's important to note that at the planning commission, the original motion was to approve our plan as submitted. Unfortunately, there were only five members of that 11-member board available to vote that night, and so we were defeated on a 3-2 vote. So I don't want anybody to think that the entire planning commission voted against us because the original motion was in our favor. And I think that that was one of the comments that was made, is we need to do something with the project, and I think everybody agrees here. We need to do something. At 18 units, there's just no way any responsible developer could swing this project unless it's some government-funded project maybe, or some low-rent type of arrangement. Maybe that could fit in there at those limitations, but I think that would even be tight. I told you before, talking about the concern of the neighborhood wanting single-family homes, basically you're looking at a $250,000 price tag, $250,000, give or take, to tear down the building, and then installation of streets and utilities. It's just not going to be a recoverable cost to build single-family homes there with, because you would only be able to put four or five in at the most, and so you're just not going to be able to recover $100,000 or more costs per lot at that location. That's why it doesn't work with R1. The project that we're proposing, we believe, meets the standards and requirements of the zoning classification we're seeking on R3 low density, and that will be part of the second, the next item on your agenda is the approval of the planned residential overlay. And as my client and I understand this, any approval of the zoning will be subject to the planned residential overlay being approved by the council as well. So there should be no concern by the council or members of the public that we have this zoned into R3 low density and then flip the property to somebody else and something else gets built in there that's not as appealing. We think that this project fits. It is an elderly project. It's a 45-year use commitment on behalf of Selden. All residents have to be 62 or older or disabled. We don't believe there's going to be any increase in crime or traffic problems in the neighborhood and think this will definitely be a benefit to the neighborhood. So we would certainly appreciate your support. Randy Lenoff, the CEO of Selden Company, is here. Mike Fallison, who's heading up this project over here in Council Bluff for us from Selden, is also here, as well as Kurt Sauer, our architect and engineer. If you have any questions for them, they'd be happy to answer them. Thank you for your time. We certainly would appreciate your support tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor?
My name's Steve Bott. I live at 18951 Cathy Lane, Council Bluff. There's a few points, and Debbie got most of them, but number one about the density, you've got to understand density and zoning. Under an R3 zoning, which the planning commission went along with, but they didn't put for the density portion. Under an R3 with three acres of ground, you can put 66 units, and I double-checked this with the planning department. If they're planning 46 units, that's only 68, 69% of the maximum density for this site. That's a three-acre site. Again, if this doesn't go through, like she said, if it's demoed, and like I said last time in front of this council, the city school board does not have deep pockets to lose a sale for a quarter million dollars, then spend another quarter million to demo and clear the site. And if that's the case in R1 zone, like she said, three to five houses, and that wouldn't be, you know, financially feasible. Plus that, with a tax base that this project would generate versus three or three to five houses would be quite a bit more for a tax base of Council Bluff on, you know, for this particular site. Last time, they were talking about zoning, spot zoning and so forth, and along North Broadway, there is an established rezoning. I know at least four sites along there. Just north of Hoover School, there's a home that was rezoned R3 for battered women or abused women, just north of Hoover. On Ivy Drive and North Broadway, that land was bought, I don't know if some of you remember it, they demoed a beautiful old house, Mercy Hospital, and that's being flagged for Mercy Hospice, and again, elderly, you know, or whoever is in need for that. Moving north still, Bethany Lutheran Home, I remember that was rezoned, and Bethany Village up on Elliott. And the last one I know of is up on Coit Road on North Broadway. That was that old tree dump, and that was rezoned multifamily. So there is a precedent of the rezoning in that area. Last time, the spokesman for the opposition mentioned an elderly ghetto, and I still don't understand that, but certainly this would not be an elderly ghetto. When I hear the word ghetto, I think two or three different things, and none of them are good, and it's certainly not going to be a ghetto up there. And I live north of North Broadway, and I for one won't see it. Selden Development, and I've seen multiple Selden Development projects through the last 35, 40 years, and they do an excellent job of design, building, management, and maintenance of their properties. And there's two major properties that Selden has and manages in town, North Avenue Towers, North Avenue and Highway 6, and Maple Park on 35th and 2nd Avenue. Well-maintained, fits area, and that one there, they went for a rezoning. There were some rundown single-family homes, and they demoed those, rezoned, and now they have elderly housing. Going back to the density thing again, I heard some talk last week, they might, someone's pushing for lower their number of units to 42, and that would be like 60% of what's allowed in R3 before the planning commission dumped it in your lap. But I've seen the plans, and they're well-laid out, well-thought of, and it'd be a great project for North Broadway. Gun School, like I said last time, I was on the Buildings and Grounds Committee for the school board for 30 years, and I know gun well because my son went all the way through it, and my grandson, the first year in kindergarten before it closed down. And I've seen a lot of people, the last meeting, where the majority of, what I heard, comments about doing something with gun, doing something creative, and I think with a lot of creativity, and I've known Selden's for many years, and I've seen the projects where they even had schools that they redid. They've done projects up from the Dakotas, cleared through the Central Plains, and thousands of units, and they're all, the ones I've seen, they're all in excellent shape, and I've...
Anyone else speaking in favor?
I don't live in the neighborhood, but I do live in the city. It is an ISOR. I drive by it. Not proud of it. I'd like to see the school board sell it, and hopefully that help me out on my property taxes. As you all know, they're not paying any property taxes on it now. I'd like to see it be developed and paid taxes. I think that would help me on my property taxes now. A little selfish, but I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor?
I'm Bill Hobart, 198 East Orchard. And I'm not really in for or against, but I wanted just some information regarding this project. Has the state-approved funds for the tax abilitation been approved yet?
I don't believe they have. That's an application form.
Okay, so that still has, need to be done before this project goes forward?
Correct.
Okay. So if you vote in favor tonight, that still has to take place?
Correct.
And this is, because I like to deal with money, this is a, the Daily Noprell said it was a five-point-eight-million-dollar project, and you just said it was a six-point-five? Six-point-five, probably because construction costs has gone up. And they're getting a tax abatement of, what is it, five million dollars? And they're going to sell that on the open market?
They're giving low-income tax credits, but not a tax abatement.
Tax credit.
Okay, it's a tax credit. Okay. All right. So even with that, I did a little bit of research to pay back the funds that the state is going to give to them. I researched, I think it's Primrose. Primrose is three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars a year in taxes. And if we give them the five million dollars, which if you approve, in a sense, that's what you're asking them to do, that is almost a sixteen-year payback on state funds. Just wanted to bring that point to it. I'm a firm believer in personal, private property, so if they do purchase it, you know, this theirs, and they can do with the wish. But I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of the state funds that is being applied to this, that it's everybody's issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. What's the council's pleasure?
I'd make a motion to approve the rezoning and amending that to include that the ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon the formal approval of a planned residential development plan for the Linden Place Apartments pursuant to the passage of Resolution thirteen-dash-two-eight-two and final passage and publication as by law provided.
Second?
Okay. We have a discussion on, what's that?
Is that with the?
You read it, you read that into the ordinance.
Yeah, I read that into the ordinance.
Read that into the ordinance, okay. So that is the, the ordinance, and it was a write-in, so there's not an amendment?
I'm sorry, write-in?
Read-in.
Read-in.
So is that passing the ordinance concurring with the community development and the Planning Commission?
Well, we're on the zoning, so.
Or the zoning?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Got it.
Discussion by the council. We have a motion and a second.
Is there, okay, never mind.
I don't think there's really any real dispute on the zoning. I think the dispute's probably on the resolution.
Because it's, it's dependent on the, on the next issue.
Yes. So I'll reserve my comments till, I don't want to repeat myself.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make certain I knew what I was voting on.
Yeah, me too. I appreciate that.
Okay. Now, the motion is brought forward. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
For purposes of this issue being resolved one way or the other this evening, the real critical issue is the next issue. I don't see prolonging this issue is in the benefit of any side. And so since the next issue will decide the decision, having this ordinance go through a third reading, to me, seems unnecessary. And I would prefer that we waive third and then discuss the resolution where the, I think the issue lies. So I will move to waive third reading.
Second?
Motion to the floor and a second to waive third. Any discussion by the council?
Again, just to confirm that waiving third, this whole thing hinges on when Marcy reads five A. Correct.
And is that then the vote guided by the, the petition still, Dick, on the third?
The way I would, well, essentially, that would be approving the rezoning, passing it onto law. But as been discussed, the critical issue is whether or not what the, what the planned residential area is going to look like once it's approved after they address five A. So it will leave that subject to whatever your decision is there.
So if five A ends up being
Yeah.
a resolution concurring with Planning Department and, and Community Development Department, then nothing happens? Is that correct?
From what's been stated tonight, the developer is not, does not intend to go forward if they, if that's recommended, or if that's what gets approved.
And the zoning reverts back to R1?
Correct. It doesn't ever go into effect until it's been passed.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't revert, yeah. It would never have been.
It would never change.
Yeah.
Right. But what this allows them to do is potentially apply for the tax credits on time. Correct. If, if five A goes through. If five A goes through. No, it's just nothing.
That's my understanding, and is, does it not take four out of five votes to waive third anyway? Is that right?
That's correct. Supermajority to waive the council rules, also a supermajority to pass it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And the extra, the reason I'm asking questions is there's a lot of you out there and may not understand the process, so that this is, it's the next one that's going to determine the future.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. There is quite a bit of legalese there, and so it is good, thank you for clarifying.
Right, because otherwise, I would not be in favor of waiving a third on, on an issue such as this.
I understand.
Okay, we have a motion to the floor and a second to waive third. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay. And only because historically, that's been my, if there's opposition, I don't waive third.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Resolutions, Resolution thirteen-dash-two-eight-two, continued from November eighteenth, adopting the planned residential development plan for Linden Place Apartments legally described as lots one, two, three, and thirty-five, and the west half of the vacated alley abutting except Linden South Avenue, the north, one-hundred-ninety-one feet of Lot Six, and the west, sixty feet of Lot Thirty-four, and the east half of the vacated, abutting, and school lot, all in Block Two, Lincoln Acres.
I'd make a motion to approve per what was proposed by the developer.
Second?
Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Deborah Peterson, 215 South Main Street. I think that I proudly speak for everyone that spoke, including Mr. Marshall earlier, that all of our comments that we made earlier apply to this situation. And I'm sure if you have any questions, any of us will be happy to answer those as well. But I think we've kind of covered the issues earlier.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Would you speak on it?
Yes, you may. It's a resolution.
Yes.
John Marshall, 125 Gunn Avenue. We're trying to give the impression that the Neighborhood Association may have had some growth in the past year, and any remark that was negative that we just heard, it was not repeated again. We're really committed to working forward on the issue and not looking at some past things that were remarked. Dave Christensen's not here tonight because he's on a well-deserved vacation, and he would speak just as positively on the issue as I am. Secondly, you know, the entire point with our petition, that we did stop at each of those homes, and found that each of those people adamantly opposed to any expansion to the, to the, to the site at one-hundred percent. But what we are also trying to do is see if we can get some motion going, okay, toward using that building and moving to an acceptable point of, of number of units. And really, what we heard was that Selden is basically saying, and I could understand it entirely, that forty-six units is what they need to financially do it, okay? But we're, we're more than willing to see if we can sit down and work out some type of, of progress forward. And, you know, we, we don't know if we need to stop that issue, or we need to spend more time on it, or if you're just going to vote on it tonight. But we're more than open to, 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 to discussion on the topic. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Hanson, 110 Highclere. And I want to reiterate just what Mr. Watson had said, you know, I would like to see this done. It is costing taxpayers quite a bit of money keeping, you know, this building empty. It's been empty for three years, and I would like to see something done with it, you know, sooner than later. My one concern, though, is from my understanding, the attorney over here had mentioned that there had, no one else had came through. From my understanding, no one else could make a bid on this until Selden's project would either accepted or declined. And I heard some things on the grapevine. There were some other people interested in the building. I was just curious if the city council had any idea that there were other interests in the building.
And, and again, the only, the only thing that's facing the council is this issue. There were two bids that we, we heard, there were two bids for the proposal, and the school board accepted the one.
Correct.
And this is the only one that we know about.
Okay, just wanted to clarify it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion to the floor and a second. Is there a discussion by the council?
Yeah, I just want to say that, and I'm going to vote not in favor of the, of the plan as, as submitted by Selden. I remain concerned about the density. I, I agree with the, with the neighborhood on that. I think, you know, I also agree that something needs to be done with the building. It's just going to continue to deteriorate and, and be a danger to the neighborhood and, and residents. However, I just, you know, I can't get beyond the density factor, and so therefore, I am not going to vote in favor of the proposal as submitted by Selden.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, sure, I can go ahead. And I am going to vote in favor of the proposal. I hate to see this building continue to sit vacant and have it become an ISOR and become a dangerous building. I live in a neighborhood where not too far away, we had a school that sat vacant for quite some time, a little gym, but, and it just continued to deteriorate, unfortunately. I do appreciate all the comments we have received from neighbors and from those, both in favor and against. I will say that overall, I've received more comments from people who are in favor of this development. Granted, I understand those you in close proximity are not, but unfortunately, as a member of council, we're faced with making the difficult decision that's in the best interest of all the community. And I truly feel that the best interest for the community as a whole is to approve this proposal, which adds to tax base and will help this building remain a historic building and be improved. So that was my reasoning.
Any other discussion?
Well, I want to, do you know?
I don't know that I have anything great to add. I've been in this seat for eighteen years, and every multifamily development we see, we get the same arguments. And fortunately, knock on wood, I hope that our luck continues after the projects are complete and constructed. We have not yet, we have yet to have somebody come back and say, you made the wrong decision, so.
Well, this, this has been a difficult issue for me, that I have spent dozens of hours weighing a true dilemma, because on the one hand, I very much respect the, the opinions of those who live closest to, to this proposal. And on the other, I, I see a historic building of, of great pride to folks throughout the community, but particularly in, in the neighborhood, literally deteriorating in front of our eyes and becoming an attractive nuisance to kids and squatters and people trying to steal copper. And my greatest fear is, I have seen a lot of vacant historic buildings go up in smoke, and not just the loss of the building itself, but the risk to the neighborhoods around it and the police and fire who'd have to go in there after a kid, or a vagrant, or fighting the fire and may die when the ceiling collapses. It weighs heavily on me. I've, I've expressed, I've shared the same concerns as Lynn about, about density. Would I prefer it be less? Yes. In an ideal world, would I prefer it be single-family homes on that, those lots? Yes. The fact is, is North Broadway is such a busy street that, and the speed limit is quite frankly not observed, I'm not saying anything that I think is a surprise to anyone who drives on the street. If we, there is no way we could put four to six more curb cuts, that is, driveway cuts into North Broadway at that, at that curve in the road, unless we seriously consider dropping the speed limit by ten or fifteen miles an hour. And quite frankly, people seem to be going that over the current one. And so I just don't see it as realistic, so, so what we'd have to do is we'd have to do what's called a frontage road. You see those in front of malls, where you have to get off at usually kind of an inconvenient point, and then space is made for, it's, it's a city road, but it almost feels like it's a private lane. And so when you put that in and you meet the requirements for the fire trucks to get through, which are pretty big these days with all the equipment, you get about four house lots on that. And they would be lots that would fit in, in, in my neighborhood, a little bigger than my neighborhood, where our lots are about ten-hundredths of an acre, which were, you know, people tended to like a hundred and forty years ago. But it's tougher to get people to buy new construction when a lot is that small. So you'd be looking at people that would be having to spend sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars on just the lot alone. And I mean no disrespect to the neighborhood, because my neighborhood does not have a view of an ocean or a mountain either. So I just don't think you're going to get anybody spending that much for the lot to build a nice quality, single-family home there. So we're faced with a situation in which somebody's come forward with a project that I believe is too dense versus the likelihood that nothing happens. I, I just don't see anything else happening on that lot, and as I've struggled with it, I, I remembered the oath, you know, that each of us as a volunteer takes, you know, we are residents just like you, and we take a lot of time, and indeed, the, the amount of time and money it takes to, to campaign to get up here is far, far in excess of, of the stipend that I'm certainly not begrudging. But we're up here because we're trying to make a difference, and I know that everybody in the audience is too, on both sides. But I've got to look at what the neighborhood thinks in my own opinion as I vote, but also what, what would be good for the community too. And as I look, we have a large number of folks like, like my mother. My father's passed away already, but my mother, who's at an age I, I won't say so that I can, you know, go to Christmas this year. But it won't be too many more years before, you know, the idea of keeping the raised ranch and all of that grass to mow is probably not going to be something she wants to do, and certainly not going to be something at some point she's going to be able to do, just like my grandparents who had to leave the, the home place our families had since we came to this country, north of town, because they just can't physically do it. And like many people, they, they mainly survive on social security and what little they've been able to save in life. And, you know, like, like most everybody in this town, we're middle-class folks, and, you know, trying to do the best we can for kids, our kids now, and so we look forward. There are just so many people who, they're good people. And indeed, I, I think you'll find, and I went and looked at statistics, I couldn't find enough for a statistical sample from, from this neighborhood, but from other neighborhoods throughout the state. I limited it to our state. And the vast majority of units held in these sorts of places are people who could no longer stay in their own home, but weren't quite ready for the nursing facility, or what we used to call nursing homes, which cost- used to call nursing homes, which cost a heck of a lot more, that really you and I all pay in taxes, because most people have exhausted. And the language, the lingo of the law, they're spent down their resources, don't have anything left. And, you know, we as a society have decided we're not going to let them stay out in the street and die. So we're not talking 20-year-olds partying at 2:00 in the morning. We're talking people that are disabled and over the age of 62, which I hesitate, or rather hasten, excuse me, to add, is not so old these days, just for the sake, again, of Christmas dinner. But as you get older, I think the odds of that happening, or of drag racing, or speeding, not to be stereotypical, but I generally don't find that with older people. There are exceptions. But, and I totally get where the neighbors are coming from. I'd be concerned too, quite honestly, if I'm in your position, because you're faced with the devil you know right now, which isn't very good, but the one you don't know scares you more, and I get that. But the reason why so many of our folks in town are going to be able to afford to live in this place, which is the proposal is only up to 60 percent a median, is because when you're living on social security and maybe some mutual funds, or if you were lucky enough to still have one of those things, I've read about pensions, I don't really understand them because they don't exist in my life. I've never had one and don't even fully understand how they work, because they just don't exist anymore. I'd like to think social security will, but that's another issue. But as we look to the current ones retiring, there are so many folks in the baby boomers. Where are they going to live? Do we want them to stay here? Do we want these people to have a good life in a community, in a neighborhood? And I've seen other proposals where they've packed as many people in like sardines to take advantage of old people, and I could never support something like that. And this has two large community rooms, one of which I understand will be what I'd call a computer lab, and the other one kind of a multipurpose room that they've offered to the neighborhood. Residents would get first dibs on it, which would seem only fair since they're paying to live there, and it's market rent. And there's a time for a discussion about whether we need the affordable housing for poorer folks, and I mean truly poorer folks, the people that social security would be a life of luxury to these folks if they could get, if they were able to qualify for it. And there are a lot of people who can't. They don't have enough years into the system, or they didn't make enough, or what have you. And as you look at it, those folks need places too. But the biggest deficit we have when it comes to quote-unquote "affordable" housing in our community are housing for middle-class people. And I've usually talked about younger ones. We have an absolute dearth of houses between 120 and 180. Young professionals are those folks who may be not in a professional situation, but that might be the top home they own. We just don't have any compared to folks right next to us, so they move. Well, we don't have a lot of houses for older folks either. You know, ones without stairs and big lawns to mow, and without four bedrooms, and it also turns those houses older. Having moved, like many of my colleagues, to an older neighborhood, most of our town are older neighborhoods, that's one of its charms. You know, there are a lot of stairs, there's a lot of dusting, there's a lot of painting, don't get me started. But I'm stubborn, so I might try doing it when I'm 85. But if by chance and likelihood in my family's genes, I'm not going to be able to climb those stairs, and certainly not going to be going 35 feet up in the air to paint detail work on trim, or if I do, stop me. Where am I going to go? I want to stay in this town the rest of my life. At that point, I'm going to be living on social security, just like most of us, and a little bit I've been able to save. But I think we've got to take that long picture. I am so respectful and very much appreciate that the neighborhood has come a heck of a long way, and I choose that word carefully, a heck of a long way. And I mean that, because they have gone from a position of being against anything other than single-family, which, again, I would love in a perfect world, but is unrealistic here. And I think in their heart of hearts, they would know that too. And they've moved to, I think, a very reasonable position. If there was someone here willing and able to lose the amount of money necessary to make that work, I'd be the first in line, but there isn't. So how do we keep that building going? How do we save that school that so many folks, including in that neighborhood, worked so desperately hard to save for our history? This seems to be the only game in town right now. And is it too dense? In my opinion, yes. Is the alternative worse? I'm afraid so. So I suspect I'm the swing vote here, and so to uphold my oath and my conscience, I hope people will respect me when, and I'm sorry for a long-winded answer, but I wanted to let you know I really thought this through very deeply, and this is not an off-the-cuff thing in the least. I think this, I think the neighborhood will have by their great efforts, have achieved a great working relationship with this overlay. They will be there right front and center. I'm quite certain they will be there, and I'd hold them against them if they didn't. And I mean that. If they weren't right there to make certain it were enforced, I'm sure it will be. I'm sure this developer, who has done many projects throughout the metro area and got their start when they started here penniless, when I believe it was their grandfather, if the current generation's still alive, came over penniless as a Russian Jew with nothing who have escaped the czar's pogroms. And there's lots of Selden additions, I know as an appraiser you'll see, third and seventh. It's because they got their start, even though they're a multi-state company that's now across the river, they got their start building our houses here after the war. A lot of those homes, a lot of us live in, were the various type of development for regular folks that they're now doing on multi, for multifamily. And I think it honors our history. I'm holding them to their word, and I have every confidence they will, but I'll do my job to make sure they will. I believe the neighborhood will, and I think we'll look back at this as something we all grew from. Again, I'm sorry for long explanation, but I will be voting in favor of this. And so I wanted you to understand where I was coming from.
Any other discussion?
No, I clearly have set out my points prior that I believe we need this type of housing in Council Bluffs. And if I say it's not appropriate in this neighborhood, then what neighborhood is it appropriate in? You know, when a development needs to go in and we need this housing, am I supposed to, you know, if I say no here, then I would have to say that that would apply to any neighborhood in Council Bluffs. And I, the density doesn't, in that, the number of people that'd be living in this facility is much reduced from what it would be if it were not elderly housing. And as far as traffic goes, it's going to certainly be a lot, lot less traffic than what was there with the school. We need this on the tax rolls, we need to provide this type of housing to our citizens. So I will be voting in favor of it.
Okay, any other discussion by the council?
Yeah, I just wanted to end it all. Obviously, I'm the only no on this motion, but I just want everybody to know that, you know, there are four parties to this, to this situation. And, you know, I've had conversations here at the city, spoken with the school board members, the developer, and the neighborhood association, and some neighbors, as well as answering emails, taking phone calls, et cetera. And I don't want to speak for everybody, but I would say that each of us has done that. I'm not against development, but there is development just for development's sake. So, I mean, I just, I take a prudent approach. And again, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I feel confident in saying that this is not a quick and easy decision for any of us. And I think that you've probably, hopefully, have seen us struggle and taken the time to look at all aspects of this, of this issue. And we're each making our decision after a lot of thought and consideration, based on what each of us believes is good for the city. So I want to thank everyone for participating in the process, because public input is much appreciated when it happens. And with that, I will stop.
I just merely want to say, I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Branigan, for taking a rather principled stand. As she said, we've all taken what we truly believe to be right, and I do fully commend all my colleagues, including my colleague who I'll be disagreeing with on this vote, because I fully respect her opinion. And this is your government working. And again, I truly mean it, I do want folks to stay involved. This is just the start of a process. The success or non-success of it will depend entirely on everybody continuing to move forward in good faith and remaining a part. And I truly, truly hope and fully believe everyone will. We live in such a wonderful community, I have no doubt of it.
And because of the petition that was filed, you do need four yeses, and I think you've got them.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Madam Clerk?
Resolution 13-298, authorizing the city clerk to certify the solid waste nuisance assessments to the Potawatomi County Treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Resolution 13-299, authorizing the city clerk to certify the weed assessments to the Potawatomi County Treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Resolution 13-300, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to renew the current solid waste disposal contract with Iowa Waste Systems for an additional 15 years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I just want to briefly commend the mayor and the health department staff. So that folks will know, this renewal locks in for the first four years at current rates, and then after that, a very, very reasonable, just slightly above inflation rates, all the way through 20, the year 2029, for solid waste. We're going to be paying almost half of what other cities in the metro area are currently paying today for getting inflation in the next few years. And they have, they have found that they recommend to us that the current contractor's doing a great job. I have not gotten one complaint that they haven't. And it's such a phenomenal price, and I think people need to know how well the people working for them are looking out for them. And I don't think they always get the credit, and so I'd like to see that they get some here.
Well, Nate, I think you bring up a great point. Now, Don Gross and his, or Don Dirks and his entire staff, if you look at Council Bluffs 20 years ago, we have had not a landfill in Potawatomi County in 40 years. In 1990, we were required to reduce our solid waste by 50% that goes to landfill. By having a recycling facility, which is second to none in the state, in the metro area, we've been able to reduce our solid waste by that 50% in a lot of different ways. And then to have the ability to have this contract, kind of sets the stage for the future. I think it takes a lot of work, and Don does a great job and his whole staff to get this done. Negotiations were not easy all the time, but I think it kind of set us up for the next 25 years. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Resolution 13-301, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Shimmer and Associates Incorporated in connection with the lower Bennett Rehab, Phase 5.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Resolution 13-2302, approving additions to and revisions of the city's current personnel policies manual.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Resolution 13-303, approving the labor contract between the City of Council Bluffs and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 1 for the period of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I just want to commend again the mayor and retiring after, was it 36 years?
36 years.
Cindy Lynch retiring. She and both the, I'll just, I'll say my comments once, and much briefer, hold me to Both sides, both sides have, unlike other places who could learn from the examples set wonderfully here in Council Bluffs, both sides, the police and fire unions and the city have worked together to come up with a decent wage that is still very respectful to taxpayers, and they're going to be contributing more, even more, and they've always contributed a very healthy rate compared to their peers. They're going to be contributing even more to their health insurance and the costs associated with that. And we're doing it on an amicable basis, and it's barely December. And I think that shows how working together and trying to solve challenges and come to solutions that work for everybody can be done. And it's been done here, and I commend the mayor and Cindy Lynch, who will be missed.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Resolution 13-304, approving wage and benefit adjustments for police supervisory employees for the period of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Resolution 13-305, approving the labor contract between the City of Council Bluffs and the Council Bluffs Association of Professional Firefighters Local 15 for the period of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Opposed, nay.
Resolution 13-306, approving wage and benefit adjustments for fire supervisory employees for the period of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And I do have one comment I'd like to make. Both unions, both the fire and the police union, came to the table to do it right. We've always had good work with our unions, supervisory, all the unions that we deal with have always done, I think, the right way. And they know when they walk into the table, we only have so much money, and we know that we have to make sure that we pay our people to keep them here and do the job they do. And so I want to commend both unions for a job well done, and that reflects on our supervisory people too. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 13-307, authorizing the mayor to approve the funding agreement between the City of Council Bluffs and the Council Bluffs Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
It's my understanding that, to fill in the blank, I think it's in paragraph four for the balance of this fiscal year, the number would be $299,507.
That's what, yeah.
Second concurs.
So that was just the number.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Resolution 13-308, authorizing the mayor to accept.
We deleted that, we deleted that.
That's correct. Excuse me. Applications for permits and cancellations, 6A, 1 through 5.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there a discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That ends the printed agenda for this evening. Anyone from the audience like to speak with the council?
Any particularly of the Boy Scouts, who I'm imagining are here for their citizenship in the Community Merritt Lodge, if I remember correctly, it's been a few years.
And you picked a great meeting to attend. Wasn't this fun?
They're normally not as well-attended, but tonight was a good example in democracy. It truly is. And so, thank you for coming.
Anyone from the council this evening? With that, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Stand adjourned.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, we take pride in our community in volunteering our time to helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We are Council Bluffs people, operating at Council Bluff's bank to help Council Bluffs be a better place to work and live. Hometown banking, the way it used to be.